Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of June 27, 2023. May I have a roll call, please?
Tonight, we have at our meeting Mr. Alan Slaven, Ms. Judith Whiteside, Mr. Jared Chadwick, our lawyer, and we also have on Zoom, we have our town administrator, Derek Sullivan. And we're missing at this point, Mr. Ron Bessie.
Thank you. This is a hybrid meeting, and Mr. Day will be letting people in and out of the meeting at my instruction. And other than that, we will be operating in person. May I have the pledge of allegiance, Mr. Chadwick, please?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I have put residents' comments, I'm sorry.
Just for clarification, Derek is not in the meeting yet.
Okay, thank you. Would you let me know when he comes in so that I can mark the record? Thank you. Thank you. I have put residents' comments back on the agenda. Residents may speak to us, we may not respond to you, you may not speak to anything that is on the agenda. It would be a violation of the open meeting law. Is there anyone here who would like to make a resident comment? Please raise your hand. You must step forward, you must sit here, you must identify yourself with your name and address, please.
I'm not able to speak about anything on the agenda.
That's correct.
So then what's the purpose of speaking?
You might want to complain about the fact that we don't have any fireworks or something like that. But we cannot respond to you unless it is, we can't respond to you.
Can I tell why I'm here?
If you are here for the dog hearing, that's...
No, I'm here for, would like to put in a bench in my mom's...
You're going to have to take a, you can, you can, you can speak to that, but we cannot answer you.
That's fine.
Thank you. You had to identify yourself.
My name is Claire Tenaglia, and I live on Swiss Beach as a seasonal resident. I'm here on behalf of my dad, who's sitting here, and he is 92. My mom passed away in January. They have owned property here for at least 60-plus years in Wareham, seasonal.
Two minutes.
He is, yeah. He is asking to install a granite bench on Swiss Beach beside the existing bench. We are very familiar and friendly with the family that has the existing bench. My dad's is paying for it, but he would like to install a five-foot bench, smaller than the existing bench, but identical, and it would be in my mom's memory. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else choose to speak to this board? Seeing none, I will go to announcements. Mr. Chadwick?
I have none at this time.
Mr. Slaven?
Just a quick question. I'd like to, or you can ask them, have they applied to municipal maintenance?
I'm not going to answer that question. It's on the, there is an item that we will be talking about later on. Thank you. Comments, please, or your announcements?
Announcements, I think Tricia has the Historical Society, so I'll let that one go. CPA grants for the Fall Town Meeting.
I don't think they can hear you.
CPA grants for the Fall Town Meeting are due the second Tuesday in July. The Ontario Bay Association has a list up on their website of different events for the July 4 timeframe. Just to remind everybody, a year ago, we decided through the OBA, who handles the stuff, there'll be no more July 4 fireworks in Wareham. We'll be doing a firework September 23 in conjunction with a harvest festival, car show, vendors, food trucks, and as I say, usually at dusk is the fire show itself. And I think the car show is my notice from 10:00 to 2:00. And basically, everybody be careful on the 4th, it's always an interesting time to do things wrong.
Thank you. Ms. Wertz, announcements?
I'd like to announce that the Wareham Historical Society is holding its 45th Annual Antique Fair on July 4. And so it will be held at the Center Park, which is the town green at 495 Main Street, and it will also be held at the Farring Tavern, 11 Elton Street. Farring Tavern is a museum, and it is open at no charge during this festival. The fee for the festival is $5 per adult. Children 12 and under are there for free. It will run from 8:00 AM in the morning till 2:00 PM. There will be food available, and the admission is $5 per adult. There is one other thing. If you have, if anyone has antiques at home or pieces of elderly units that you think might be of value, Frank McNamie, how do you say his name, McNamie? Who is the owner of Mary Anne Antiques, he will be giving appraisals at the meeting house from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and the fee for an appraisal on one item is $5, and for three items, it's $10. And it's been a successful event in the past years. I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. I'm going to go to appointments, reappointments, and interviews, just so that the people in the audience know, we have a hearing at 7:15. I cannot call that hearing until 7:15, but I can call it after 7:15 if my agenda is holding me up to get there, okay? May I have motions on appointments? Is, may, Mr. Day, or anyone in the, in the audience? Wendy St. Julian, Amarat Carahalis, Jackson Gilman, Dave Menard, Melissa Coronan, or Marie Riley? Are any of them in the audience, please?
Ask them to raise their hands, because I want to know.
Yes, could you raise your hand? I'll do it again. Wendy St. Julian, Amarat Carahalis, Jackson Gilman, Dave Menard, Melissa Coronan, Marie Riley. If you are in the audience, please raise your hand if you choose to address the board. Nope. Okay. And I noticed that Mr. Sullivan is here at 7:08. Thank you. Ms. Wertz, go ahead.
Looking at the agenda for 6A, I move to appoint to the Wareham Cultural Council for a term to expire June 30, 2024, Wendy St. Julian and Amarat Carahalis.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. They are appointed, and they will not be sworn in until they have completed all the paperwork. Next, Ms. Wertz.
Okay. I make a motion that we appoint for a term to expire June 30, 2026, Mr. Jackson Gilman to the Wareham Cultural Council.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint Jackson Gilman to the Wareham Cultural Council. All three of these so far have been reappointments. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. 400. Next, please.
I make a motion to appoint to the Carver Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District, Judith Whiteside, for a term to expire June 30, 2025.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. 400. Next, please.
Likewise, I move to appoint to the Carver Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District, David Menard, term to expire June 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Menard is our director of the Municipal Maintenance Department. Hearing no further discussion, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. 400. Next, please.
And I move to appoint to the Wareham Council on Aging Board, Melissa Coronan, Coronan, for a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. She is a re-up as well. Is there any further discussion on the motion to reappoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. 400.
And lastly, I move to appoint to the Wareham Council on Aging Board, Marie Riley, term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second.
Reappointment?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded to reappoint. Hearing no further discussion, I will call for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. All of those appointments actually are reappointments. However, they may not be sworn in for their re-upped term until they have completed all of the paperwork that we require by our policy. Number eight, Ms. Wertz, is Jeff Isidoro or anyone from Longhorn in the audience? Please raise your hand. Or anyone here, oh, come on up. You have to take a seat, please, sir. Yes. Identify yourself with your name and your, are you here for the, are you the new manager?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm Jeff Isidorio.
Thank you.
I'm the new manager at Longhorn in Wareham.
Thank you. I'm going to ask for a motion first, and then I will let you ask questions of the gentleman. May I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the change of manager application from Rare Hospitality International, DBA, Longhorn Steakhouse, to Jeffrey...
Isidorio.
Isidorio.
Very good.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Isidorio, do you choose to address the board?
I think there's no need. I thank you for having me today.
Okay. Are you a manager at one of their other locations, or is this a new?
This is a new appointment.
Okay.
I've been with the company for 20 years.
Can you pull the mic?
I've been with the company for 20 years.
Any other questions?
Just, you guys have some good burgers on your lunch menu, just wanted to say that.
I appreciate. Great deals.
And the only other comment I have, Mr. Isidorio, is there's a few supporting documents that they may be in our office, but we don't have them notified here?
Yeah, they are.
They are here?
Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
Any further discussion?
How did I do that?
Yeah, you did.
Is there any further motion, any further discussion on the motion to have the change of manager? Is anybody in the audience who wants to speak to this? No. Okay. I'll call for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. It is done. The paperwork will be forwarded to ABCC. Thank you very much, Mr. Isidorio.
Thank you kindly.
Nice to meet you.
As well.
I'm going to go to item 9C, please, which is a confirmatory vote. Ms. Wertz, please.
I make a motion that we confirm the vote taken on June 13, 2023 regarding the Plymouth County Retirement Cola Adjustment.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Do you recall that last week, that we got this information late, and we needed to send the information to Plymouth County so that they understood that we would be accepting of the change? Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. It is done. Accept the funds from the Ware, E., please.
E., I make a motion that we accept the funds from the Friends of Wareham Free Library to the Spiny Memorial Branch of the Wareham Free Library in the amount of $4,000 for operating expenses.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept funds for the Spiny Memorial Branch. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
I'd like to thank the Friends, and the answer is yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Yes, the Friends give probably upwards of $12,000 to $15,000 on an annual basis to the library, which is absolutely spectacular. Ms. McHale, do you want to, you have two minutes. Do you want to speak to the conservation restriction, or do you want to wait until after the hearing?
Can we wait until after the hearing?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the presentation under 9A will be done remotely after we have our hearing.
It is 7:15.
And it is 7:15. So I am going to ask that you read the notice for the hearing, please, Ms. Wertz. And Mr. Bowen is our town council. He will be running this meeting. So I would ask that the people who intend, or intend to speak on this come forward and be sworn in, Mr. Bowen?
With your...
Yes, please.
Judith, I don't have the thing to read here.
Madam Chairman, maybe we could get the notice of the hearing read first.
Yes, from, yep. Do you have the notice?
I don't.
I have it here. This is addressed to Ms. Judy Heron. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of Massachusetts General Laws, you are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held before the Select Board on Tuesday, June 27, 2023, at 7:15 PM regarding dogs owned or kept by you. Previous letter sent to you indicated this would be a remote meeting. However, dog hearings will now be conducted in person. The hearing will be held in the multi-service center. Your attendance is required for this hearing in order that your interest is properly protected. Is Ms. Heron here? Could you just raise your hand, Slav?
She's not here.
She's not here.
Is she, she's in the audience? She was told she needed to be here, sir.
She's over the...
She's in the Zoom.
I'm sorry, where is she?
She's in the Zoom. She was told...
She's in the Zoom, okay.
Fine, but, okay.
Can we get Ms. Heron linked in, please?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Heron, can you unmute yourself, please?
We will put her up on the screen.
If she puts her camera on.
And you can put your camera on if you'd like. It might be helpful to the board. How are we doing with Ms. Heron?
She unmuted and re muted.
Ms. Heron, would you kindly unmute yourself so we can move forward with this, please? Excuse me.
She keeps unmuting and re muting. I think she's having some technical issues on her end.
May I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
Make a motion that we open the hearing on, in accordance with provisions of Chapter 140, Section 157 of the Massachusetts General Laws, that are hereby notified that a public hearing will be held before the Select Board on Tuesday, June 27, 2023, regarding dogs owned and kept by Ms. Heron.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the hearing. Do I hear any further discussion on opening the hearing? Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is now open. Mr. Bowen?
Madam Chairman, we really need to have the dog owner participating in this. Respectfully suggest that we suspend the hearing for five or 10 minutes while Ms. Heron's technical issues get resolved. Oh, are you in? Great.
Her video's on.
Okay, thanks. Can you hear me all right?
We can't hear her.
We can't hear you, though. You, just try to say something so we can, no, we're on lip-reading status right now. No, not yet.
She's muted.
Yeah, you have to unmute yourself, I believe.
There we go.
No.
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 Yeah, Ms. Heron, why don't you take the next five minutes and try to get yourself on the air, if you could?
She has an iPhone, she can do it on the...
And then I just suggest that while she resolves her technical details, you proceed with something else, and then maybe we can get Ms. Heron joining us.
Thank you. Would you swear in the witnesses, please, Mr. Bowen?
Well, I can't hear Ms. Heron be sworn in, so I'm suggesting that you not move ahead with the hearing for the moment. Do something else, and then we'll let Ms. Heron...
All right, then I'll just hear the complaint from Ms. Cludier.
Get herself connected.
May I hear the complaint from Ms. Cludier?
I would rather wait until...
Thank you.
The witness can participate.
We'll participate. Do you want to take a five-minute recess?
No, we're not taking a five-minute recess, thank you very much. Ms. Wertz, please go to item 12.
Are we open in the middle of a hearing?
B, C, and D. Oh, may I have a motion to...
Move to adjourn the hearing for five minutes.
Recede the hearing for five minutes.
Recede.
Recede the hearing for five minutes.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to recess for five minutes. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. We are recessed until 7:25. If at 7:25 she hasn't reappeared, I'm going to ask that this hearing be continued to a date specific forward, and she has been told that she was supposed to be here in person.
Second.
Sounds correct.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Wertz, may I have motions on 12, B, C, and D, please?
I make a motion for to approve for the approval of... I make a motion for the approval of the meeting minutes for March 28th, 2023, April 4th, 2023, April 11th, 2023, and April 18th, 2023.
Do you want to include the other two all on?
No, no. May I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in second.
Was everybody present?
I'm sorry?
Was everybody present? Everybody, were they present?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve those? Hearing none. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Those are approved. Next, please, on C, please.
Make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from March 16th for the special joint meeting with police, with the Police Study Commission.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in second. And Mr. Bessie, I mean, Mr. Chadwick, you were not present at that meeting. Is there any further discussion on the motion to approve? Hearing none. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Unfortunately, yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. 400, they are approved. And then I would need a motion to approve and hold the executive session minutes.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the executive session meetings of June 6th, 2023, and June 13th, 2023.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made in second to approve and hold the executive session minutes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. They are approved, and they are being held. Ms. McHale, is Ms. Ladue going to be joining you?
She's at another meeting right now, so I need to text her when we're on, and she'll be logged in.
In two minutes, the hearing will be recessed to a date specific, so if you could find out where she...
I will do that, yes.
Thank you. And if she's not here, then we have somebody else. We have Jackie, Jackie Jones, who would be coming on for another presentation.
She has her hand up.
She's got her hand raised, but she's still muted.
Can you...
I'm not muted now, am I?
No, you're good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry about all this.
It's okay.
May I have a motion to go back into this hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
A motion made in second. Is there any further discussion on reopening this hearing? Hearing none. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, the hearing is open. Mr. Bowen, it is your game now.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Would everyone who intends to testify at the hearing please raise your right hand? You too, Ms. Herron. Perfect. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
I do.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Herron is here. The animal control officer is here. Just for the benefit of the audience, what we'll do is we'll allow the prosecution to present its case first. Anyone who wishes to testify and has actual knowledge in support of the prosecution case will be allowed to speak at that time. Ms. Herron will have the opportunity to cross-examine anyone who speaks, and then Ms. Herron can put on her case and call any witnesses that she wishes to call. So, we all set? Ms. Herron?
Yeah.
Great.
May I just remind all of you that you must not overspeak somebody else, that you must identify yourself for the record, including your address, and for the record? Thank you.
Yeah, it's important information. So, with that, to the animal control officer, tell us why we're here.
So I, Animal Control Officer Devon Clodier of Wareham Department of Natural Resources, hereby make a request that the dogs owned or harbored by Mrs. Judy Herron at 86 Wareham Lake Shore Drive in Wareham are dangerous as defined by Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 136A, by reason of, one, without justification, attacks a person or domestic animal, causing physical injury or death, or, two, behaves in a manner that a reasonable person would believe poses an unjustified imminent threat of physical injury or death to a person or domestic or owned animal. I responded to a dog bite involving Danny, a 10-year-old neutered male bulldog-type dog, on October 20th, 2022. This incident resulted from Danny being able to jump on the storm door of the home, thus pushing it open and allowing himself access to the street. Mrs. Herron was aware of Danny's dog aggression and stated that she was working to find solutions to mitigate the issue. On May 16th, 2023, Danny and Mrs. Herron's other dog, Clancy, a 1-year-old intact male Dog de Bordeaux-type dog, were involved in another dog bite, causing serious injury to a neighboring dog. Both dogs pushed the door open again, allowing themselves access to the street. Mrs. Herron was issued a 10-day rabies quarantine for both, both dogs, and I've spoken with Mrs. Herron about the importance of preventing any further ability to escape the yard. I do not find these dogs to be aggressive or threatening to people, but they are a threat to other domestic animals. I requested that Mrs. Herron take significant steps to ensuring the property is securely enclosed and that neither dog is allowed to be outside unleashed or unsupervised. Clancy is known to me to be less aggressive than Danny, but both dogs must be effectively contained in order to prevent any further injuries.
And what is your recommendation?
So my recommendations include, sorry, one, that the dogs be humanely restrained, provided however, that no order shall provide a dog deemed dangerous to be chain-tethered or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree, post, or building. Two, that the dogs be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outside in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper. And three, that when removed, the dogs on the premises, the dog, when removed from the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, the dog shall be securely and humanely restrained with a chain or tethering device having a minimum strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding 3 feet in length.
Thank you. Ms. Herron, do you have any questions for the animal control officer?
No.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to testify next in support of the prosecution? If you could just come forward, take a seat, identify yourself. Go ahead.
My name is Emily Nash. I live at 65 Wareham Lake Shores.
Hey, go ahead, Emily. What, tell us why you're here.
Yeah, so I was with my dog on May 15th, 2023, on a walk with my boyfriend, and we were passing the Herron house, and we look over and we see Clancy, the Dog de Bordeaux. He jumped on the glass, came out, and started attacking my dog. At some point, the bulldog also followed suit. I have here the doctor's notes. With that, I see methadone, fentanyl, and ketamine all supplied to my 23-pound dog. She had to have life-saving surgery, and our dog bill is total almost $6,000.
Ms. Herron, do you have any questions for Emily?
No. No.
Thank you. Ma'am, do you have any questions for Emily?
No, not at this time. I also have images of her injuries, the aftermath, if anyone would like to see that. Her stitches, she had over 30 staples and stitches underneath. She had two drains, one being a JP drain, and she's still recovering, both physically and mentally and emotionally.
Questions from the board?
What, what type of dog is your dog?
One at a time.
Oops, sir.
Mr. Chadwick, go ahead.
My apologies. What type of dog is your dog?
She's a Chihuahua mix.
Okay, so substantially smaller. I have a, I have a Shih Tzu, so I know.
Yeah, she's 23 pounds soaking wet, so definitely scary incident.
Do you have the pictures with you?
I certainly do.
May I see them?
Can I bring them up?
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
Yeah, are they on your phone?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. You printed them? That would be better. Thank you.
Is this the first?
This was a different date than the one that Ms. Clodier's was...
This is the most recent one, yes.
So has there been...
No, this was Herbert, this is a different one. This was May 15th, and you were complaining about a May 30th.
No, no, no. I have the date here as May 16th. I was not the responding officer to that call.
Oh, okay.
So it may have been that they followed up the following day.
Yep.
But it is from the same...
That's the same. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, I can confirm Morgan was actually the officer that came by the 16th.
Thank you.
Have we had...
We had, we had another dog officer, animal control officer respond, who is not with us at the moment. So, could you just hand the paperwork to Mr. Bowen?
But is there two separate incidents, or one?
So on October 20th, I had responded to Mrs. Herron's residence for a dog bite at that time involving Danny. That one was not known to me to be significant. There was not, it was reported by a neighbor, but never able to really speak to the involved party with the dog bite.
Same dogs, though?
Yes, just Danny for the first one.
All right, but not with her dog as well?
No, her, her dog was not involved in the first incident.
May, but there, there's a record of several instances of reports from the animal control officer regarding either one or both of the dogs.
I do have...
We have them in our packet.
Morgan's report available as well.
Thank you.
These pictures pertain to the incident that you're talking about?
May 16th, or 15th.
May 15th, yeah.
I have one more statement to say, but I'll let everyone else ask, and then I'm going to say my little piece.
Ms. Wertz? Mr. Slavin?
I don't really have any questions. It's just kind of a shame that, you know, people can't restrain their animals properly when there are issues. I blame the owners as well as the dogs. A lot of times, it's not the dog's fault, but you have to be responsible. This is at a point now, we have to make sure that doesn't happen again, period.
We're going to keep these for the record. Okay. I just, yeah, go ahead.
You're muted.
You're muted.
I do have a question. Where there's been multiple reports, are the bite situations, have any people been bitten?
No, not that I'm aware of.
I have a question. Did anyone offer to pay your vet bills?
No.
Thank you.
Do we...
Do you have any other questions?
Will we have time to say something else, or is this...
Oh, yeah.
You'd have to come up.
Yeah.
With your permission, Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Herron, would you like to view the photographs?
Oh, me? No. I, I, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I also have copies of our vet bill from the emergency vet. If you guys would like that for the record.
Yes, please.
For the record. Thank you. Thank you for coming prepared.
Thank you. All right, any, any other questions for Emily? No? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other witnesses? Ma'am?
He was actually there, but I had something to add. As I took the dog to the...
They probably speak to it yet.
Okay, you can, you can pick which one of you wants to come up first. Okay, tell us, tell us where you are, where you live, and what you want the board to hear.
Sure. My name is Lisa Russell, and I live at 11 Bluebird Ave. That's in the same neighborhood as both dogs, or all dogs above. So Emily is my niece, and my husband and I took the, took her and Tommy, Emily's boyfriend, and the dog to the emergency hospital that night. But I've, I've also had run-ins with their dogs. Their dog, Clancy, that he's huge, he's huge. They had him on a run, and we were walking by, my husband, my son, and I, and he snapped the run and came out into the street. I scooped up my dog and got away, and the, the guys kind of stopped him from going, you know, at us. And the bulldog also got loose from their yard and came flying into the street, and I had to pick up my dog, who's 25 pounds, and got, got away. There was no incident to report because she wasn't injured, but it, it just happens a lot. They, they can't control that dog. He's huge. And I'm not saying I want to see him put down or anything, but I don't think if they're walking him, they can't control him. I've seen him drag them across the yard and stuff. I think that he needs to be fenced in, and if he's off the property, muzzled or whatever, both of them. I mean, to me, it's scary, because I, I literally try to avoid them if they're out walking, and it, you know, he's just big. A person can't control that, you know? So that's, you know, and that night was horrible. It was a real, that dog almost died. She was in terrible pain. They were covered in blood when I found them. My brother and his wife were away, so I stepped in to help out, but it was really, really bad. So, thank you.
Now, hold on.
Oh, do you have any questions? I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Herron, do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, questions from the board?
Mr. Chad?
I would, I would, I would say, why, how come you are not there?
I, I, I don't understand why I'm not there. I was told to be on Zoom.
No, you received a second letter to be here in person.
Never received it. I would be there.
It was certified mail, and...
Do we have the green card back?
With the green card, yep.
That's a, we have a, sent it by certified mail. We have the green card with the signature.
Yeah, I have it. I must have misunderstood it.
We send it, we send it first to have you by Zoom, and then we send a corrected letter to have you here in person. You signed for both letters.
Uh-uh, I didn't even read the second one. I thought it was a copy of the first one. I am so sorry. I am sorry.
Okay, questions from the board?
For the gentleman that was speaking on Zoom.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah, we're not crediting anything he says at this point.
Mr. Chadwick?
I'm good, thank you.
Ms. Wertz?
I'm good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions.
Who's our next witness? Come on up, sir. Tell us who you are, where you live, and what you'd like the board to hear.
My name is Tommy. I live at 32 Colburn Yarmouth.
Tommy, speak up just a little bit.
I live at 32 Colburn Yarmouth, Massachusetts.
What's your last name again?
Long.
Long, thanks.
So I was there at the night that it happened. We were just walking down the road. Our dog was leashed, and as we passed their house, as the report states, the dog, their larger dog, pushed down the door and came out. I tried to get between their dog and our dog, but I wasn't, I wasn't able to restrain it. And then the second dog came in, and obviously you can see the aftermath of what happened. So that's pretty much it. I think we should be able to walk down the street without being attacked by the dogs. So I, I agree with the other statements. I think they need to restrain those dogs a bit better, so, quite a bit better.
Ms. Herron, do you have any questions for the gentleman?
No.
Questions from the board?
Chadwick? Wertz?
No, no, thank you. Did, you didn't, I'm sorry, you didn't get injured in any other, in any way? No scratches?
My, my finger got pinched from the collar, but that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other witnesses? Well, Emily, for the second time, go ahead.
Just a quick comment.
Identify yourself again for the record, sorry.
Emily Nash, 65, Wareham Lake Shores. While I didn't have any scratches or anything, I did have some substantial bruising on my arm, on my elbow, on my chest, on my legs. So that's just a little bit, because during the, during the interaction, I tried to get in between them and get my dog, and I ended up on the ground somehow, trying to get them away, so.
Ms. Herron, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Board?
None.
Wertz?
No.
I have one. Did you see a doctor?
I did not, no. It wasn't bruising significant enough for that.
Okay, any other witnesses for the prosecution?
No.
I see no hands. Ms. Herron, this would be your opportunity to present any testimony or witnesses that you want the board to hear. So, go ahead.
Well, since this incident, we have got all hands on deck with these dogs. The big dog is a puppy, and he's just learning, so we're, we're in the process of training him. Danny, I try to keep in at all times. I've warned people. I have, I have dangerous dog signs up, no trespassing signs up, and I understand that doesn't matter when he gets out of my house. I get that. We've since fixed the door. I have boards up on my windows so they can't see out at all, because that just attracts them to go outside. We put in a cable that is used for a horse, for a runner, for the dog. I've been talking to the dog officer almost on a weekly basis to try to rectify the situation, and I would have approached the Nash family, but I was told I wasn't welcome near them, so I was afraid to go over to them, because I knew it was, you know, emotions were running high, and I didn't want to upset anybody. And I just want to apologize for any, any, anything I've caused, or my dogs caused. That's all.
Madam Animal Control Officer, do you have any questions of Ms. Herron?
Not at this time, no.
Ford?
Mr. Chadwick?
I just have a statement to say. Unfortunately, you know, I'm, I'm a huge dog lover. I, like I just said momentarily ago, I have a Shih Tzu who's probably not even more than nine, 10 pounds. Name is Rigby, and, and I'm going to put this very blunt. I love this dog to death, and I know you love your dogs, and this situation could have been a lot worse, because I know for a fact, if I was walking down the road and saw a whole bunch of big dogs coming after my dog, I would have shot him. And I'm saying that straight out, and that is the worst case scenario.
Nice guy.
It is. It sucks. It's the worst-case scenario, but I'm being straightforward.
You know, accidents happen, and that's what happens here.
Excuse me, excuse me. Please, this is one person at a time, only one person at a time. Mr. Chadwick, do you want to finish what you're saying?
Thank you.
Yeah.
I just, I don't want to see that outcome with anyone, because like I said, I'm a huge dog lover, lover of all kinds. So, please, I don't want to see it in the news. I don't want to hear it. I don't want to see something like that happening. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Wertz?
I'll stay silent at this point.
Mr. Slavin?
Pretty straightforward. We need to basically have the dog enforcement officer give us a set of rules that will protect the public, other animals, et cetera, and basically it's a one-shot deal. Next time, I'm afraid we'd have to go for euthanasia.
May I have a question? What trainer have you hired to train the dog, or what, what arrangements have you made to have the dog trained?
We, we are just in the process of getting him trained, like, like you would train a dog to not run and to listen. And if he needs more extensive training, we will. He's a puppy. He's following his big brother out the door. That's exactly what he did.
So you have not hired any professional dog trainer?
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Herron, the, the animal control officer during her presentation made a list of recommendations. Did you hear those, and do you recall what they are?
No.
Okay. Madam, could you restate your recommendations? And Ms. Herron, listen to them carefully, because I'm going to ask you about them.
So I have one, that the dogs be humanely restrained, provided however, that no order shall provide a dog deemed dangerous to be chain-tethered or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, included but not, including but not limited to a tree, post, or building; that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper; that when the dog is removed from the premises, the owner, the premises of the owner or the premises of the person keeping the dog, that the dog shall be securely and humanely restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding 3 feet in length.
So, Ms. Herron, do those recommendations sound reasonable to you?
Yes, we've already done them. You can, you can ask her. We've already done all that. I, I told her he's on a, he's on a horse-type cable. We, we don't even open the big door anymore. We don't even keep the storm door open anymore. I've got, I've got duct tape on my window. I've got sheet rock on my window, just so he can't see out, because the puppy gets all excited when people walk by. And as far as, they're never outside unless they go in the bathroom, being walked. We don't let them just sit in the yard and sit in the sun. I just don't, unless we're all out in the yard with them.
So, Ms. Herron, if...
And Danny doesn't like to go out.
If the board adopted an order with those recommendations, would you have any problem following them?
No, not at all.
Okay, now I want you to just think about this very carefully, because if the board orders those recommendations, that means that should one of your dogs have another incident, there could be more severe repercussions. Do you, do you understand that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowen, I have, I have some further recommendations that I'd like to throw out.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. This apparently is a recurring problem, based on the number of reports that have been filed. So I would ask that you consider that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen or dog run area upon the premises of the owner or keeper, provided further that such pen or dog run shall have a secure roof, and if such enclosure has no floor, secure to the sides thereof, the side shall be embedded into the ground for not less than 2 feet, and provided further that within the confines of such pen or dog run, a doghouse or proper shelter from the elements be provided to protect the dog. I would further suggest that when the dog is removed from the premises, it is humanely muzzled. I think you have that, you, you have it securely and humanely restrained. I'd like to have it muzzled as well as restrained. I want to have the owner or keeper of the dog provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000, insuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional, of the dog, or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance if a policy has not been issued, provided however, that if a policy of insurance has been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce such policy upon the request of the hearing authority, that's us, or Justice of the District Court, and provided further that if a policy has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce proof of efforts to obtain such, such insurance. I want to make sure that the owner or keeper of the dog is, provides the licensing authority or animal control officer or other entity identified in the order, information by which a dog may be identified throughout its lifetime, including but not limited to photographs, videos, veterinary examination, tattooing, or microchip implantations, or a combination of any such method of identification. And I had one other. These are very similar to the ones that we heard on a previous dog here, and I believe that they are called for in this instance, with all due respect to you, sir, ma'am.
No, I agree.
Ms. Herron, did you hear the chairman's list of, chairperson's, suggested list of recommendations?
It's impossible for me to do right now. I, there's, there's no, I've never even heard of insurance on dogs.
It's under your homeowner's insurance.
It's under your homeowner's insurance, your general liability.
I'm embarrassed, because these are my neighbors, and they're getting all my, all my information right now. They already don't like me, so I'm not even gonna, can I talk to you in private somehow, please?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Can she talk to us in private?
Can I talk to you in private? I'm not talking in front of these people.
No.
I'm not talking in front of the Nash family.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, this is a, a hearing held in public, so it's...
Well, now that comes to have my business.
No, no, no.
No.
Let me talk to them.
Excuse me, there's one person speaking at a time.
So, Ms. Herron, do you have, anyone else you want to have testify?
Yeah, can I talk?
My husband can testify.
Okay. Sir, have you been sworn in?
Yeah, I'll swear, I'll swear, let me swear myself in. How we do it?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So help me God.
Okay, could you give us your name, please?
James M. Herron.
And where do you live?
86 Wareham Lake Shore Drive in East Wareham.
Okay, thank you. What information do you want the board to hear?
Just that, well, we can't go along with all this stuff right now, because we can't afford it. And I don't know what you guys want to do, because my dog's a puppy, and, and you're talking, you want this one muzzled and that one muzzled. We're talking about two different... We're talking about two different dogs here. Which one is the most dangerous to you guys?
Both of them are listed to be considered dangerous due to the situation.
Well, I mean, they're both, Clancy's a puppy. He's not really dangerous. He's a big, he's big and everybody's afraid of him. So what else do you want us to do with these dogs? We have them muzzled. I have choke chains on them. I have them confronted to the yard. And that's about it. I'll build a doghouse? Is that what, you want a doghouse? Whatever else you want.
Do you have anything else to add, sir?
What's that?
Anything else you'd like to tell the-
Yeah, it's just an accident. It's, all these dog complaints, okay, are coming from one family. I would like to add that also.
Okay.
And friends of family.
Questions for the board.
Yeah, you got a question?
Chadwick?
I have no questions.
Wertz?
I only have one question, and that is, do you plan to repay the people for their costs that they've put out because of what your dogs have done? They've had a substantial cost because of that. Do you plan on-
Okay. I think that should be like a different hearing, but did the, did the people tell you they had Facebook and they already raised a lot of money?
They did a GoFundMe page.
A GoFundMe page and they already have a lot of money?
Madam Chairman, if I could, I'd-
Yes, please, Mr. Bowen.
I'd just like to suggest a Leo ruling. The standard as to whether these dogs should be deemed dangerous, the criteria do not include whether or not the vet bills have been paid. The vet bills-
No.
Sorry, you're out of order.
I'm sorry.
That information comes before the board just as evidence that the incident occurred, the severity of the incident, not, it's not a judgment of the moral character of the owners. It's, is it evidence that something happened? And you can decide from what you heard whether something happened or whether something didn't happen. The fact that somebody paid for the bill or didn't pay for it, it's not on the list of criteria for determining whether there's a dangerous dog.
Mr. Chadwick?
Has, how's this here? Has a claim on your homeowner's insurance been made by-
No.
The Nash family? Am I saying that right? Sir?
Are you talking to us? You talking to me?
Yes.
I thought that wasn't part of the hearing here.
He's right. It's not.
It's out of order. It's out of order. Any other questions?
No.
Ms. Wertz?
No.
Mr. Slavin?
The only thing is that-
And hello? And hello?
Excuse me.
On the actual conditions, I'm a little concerned that usually certain types of dogs, no matter what you want to pay for insurance, if that's a requirement, I don't think it's available.
So the, it does specify that the attempt to get the homeowner's insurance is sufficient.
All right. I want to make that clear because I don't believe you can get insurance. Once a dog's attacked someone, I don't think you can get it anyways.
It's very difficult, but-
That's right.
And it's, and it's, pitfalls for certain types of dogs are not insurable as a rule these days.
Could I say something?
Briefly, Mr. Herron. Go ahead.
Okay. I would like, I would like to pay for the dog. I would like to pay their expenses.
No. How?
Okay. Thank you. Any, do you have any other witnesses you'd like to present, Ms. Herron?
No.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, Madam Chairman, it's probably appropriate to close the hearing portion and then move on to-
Motion to close.
Is there a second to the motion made to close the hearing with a second? Is there any further discussion on closing the hearing? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, the hearing is closed.
Madam Chairman, over to the board for decisions as to making findings as to whether or not the incidents happened. If your vote is that they happened, then a vote as to the appropriate disposition.
Thank you. May I ask a question to Ms. Cludier? Would you object to any of the other things that I read into the record?
No, I would not object.
Well, may I have a motion?
Before we go ahead, I just have another question for you. The dog, which is in large whatever, can either one of these people actually restrain the dog if they're walking the dog on the street?
Yes.
I have not personally witnessed them walking the dog to be able to testify. I think, given the right equipment, that any dog can technically be restrained walking down the street, but I do not have the knowledge to say yes or no.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll accept a motion.
Alan said so moved, didn't he?
I'm sorry?
Alan said so moved. Oh, I apologize.
What are you looking for now?
Well, you have the original three recommendations from Ms. Cludier. You also have my suggestions, which are an additional, one, two, three, four.
Madam Chairman, with the understanding that the insurance recommendation you made is that they make the attempt and document that attempt.
Document that attempt. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So I would accept a motion to take her recommendations, as well as the additional four that I read into the record, and that they are completed and proven and documented to Ms. Cludier or our office within the 30 days.
So made.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, and any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, so the, may I, the dog, dogs have been declared dangerous?
The first finding that you would vote would be that they were, that you found the evidence to be credible and that the dogs therefore are deemed to be dangerous. In fact, that could be a motion if somebody wanted to say so moved.
So moved.
Okay. The motion made and seconded?
Second.
Okay. And it's to both dogs. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The dogs are deemed dangerous. And now I will accept that motion, Mr. Slavin, that you made earlier, the three recommendations as well as my additional four.
So made again.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
With the understanding that they have 30 days to prove attempts or having actually done what we have told them. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. They will be sent a letter from your office, from my office, which will be hand-delivered to you, Herron, and as well as sent to you in the mail. The dog, the animal control officer will be provided a copy of the order. You have 30 days to appeal the order to the district court. Is that correct?
Off the top, I'm not sure that it's 30 days.
I think it's 10.
10 days. You have 10 days to appeal the order to the district court. Other than that, is there any further business on this item? Hearing none. Thank you, Ms. Cludier.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. Herron. You can take the Herrons out of the pool. Thank you.
Ms. McHale, is Ms. Laduke ready or not?
She will be logging on. I just have to turn to yourself.
Okay.
Thank you.
We will not be discussing the vote on the memorial benches, which is on the agenda, and the reason is we don't have a full board here tonight, and it would be a policy decision. We'll put it on the agenda of July 11th. Thank you. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Will you be able to speak again July 11th?
Yes.
Yes. That one, that one will be a totally remote meeting.
Oh, um.
Like, yes.
Sure. I promise I won't unmute us.
Thank you. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. There, you know there's an elevator, right?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Sorry. Thank you.
Madam Chairman?
Yes. Yeah. Ms. McHale, how are you?
Good evening.
And Ms. Laduke Fleming, is she available yet? If she is, please raise your hand.
Thank you very much. My name's Nancy McHale. I'm with the Wareham Land Trust, and I, we appreciate the availability of you to consider this request, and it appears that Elise is on Zoom. Elise, if you would like to introduce yourself and introduce the project, that would be terrific. Thank you.
Perfect. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Awesome. So my name's Elise Laduke Fleming. I'm the executive director of the Wareham Land Trust, and we are before you here today because we have the opportunity to purchase a 3.5-acre piece of land on Kermit's Road on Marx Cove, just at the inlet to Cedar Island Creek, and we are hoping to get a conservation partnership grant to fund most of that purchase. It's a beautiful little piece of property that would give the public the opportunity of a great vista viewing area, a short trail that we're hoping to make as accessible as possible, wide and flat, hopefully to put a bench, a little view area out by the water. As part of the conservation partnership grant that we're hoping to get, we do need to have a CR holder in place and a letter of commitment from that CR holder. We have already spoken with the Wareham's Conservation Commission, asked if they would hold it in a similar capacity that we were having, we just had this discussion about the Sawyer property that we're about to close on. The Conservation Commission did vote to hold it if approved by the select board, and so we're before you here today with a very similar request that we had a couple months ago regarding the Sawyer property. Is the town willing to hold the CR on this property at 120 Kermit's Road if we are able to acquire it? We still have a lot of fundraising to do. We have until March of 2024 to find all the funding to buy it, but we would assume, unless there's a different request from the town or the select board, that if, if you did approve the town and the Wareham Conservation Commission to be the CR holder, that we would have a similar agreement that we came up with for Sawyer, where the Wareham Land Trust would still do the physical on-the-ground monitoring, we would provide the conservation administrator with our final monitoring report, and then we've actually developed a cover sheet following our previous conversation that we've approved internally as the Wareham Land Trust. Josh has looked at it, and he says it's okay. We're happy to share that with you. Nancy may actually have a physical copy with her, and if not, I'm happy to email that to you to review after the fact. But basically just says that it's a way for him to sign off saying, "We've done it. It's complete," and either there are no issues or there are some issues, and here are the things we're going to do to follow up. And so with that, I'd turn it over for any questions, but the main request is, is the town willing to be our CR holder for this property as well if we can acquire it? And if so, would you please write a letter of commitment to help us with our grant application to the state?
So, just to make sure we all know, this property is adjacent to the Marx Cove property. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry, I missed that point. So it is, there's a number of salt marsh pieces at the southern end of Marx Cove, and one of the most southwestern pieces is owned by the town of Wareham, and this property abuts that, so it would be contiguous to the larger 118-acre Marx Cove conservation area.
Thanks.
It's the little yellow star.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. What's wrong? I'm, but basically-
That's kind of a neat-looking map and trails and all sorts of good stuff. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do any, you have any questions of Ms. McHale or Ms. Laduke Fleming?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Slavin?
Couple things. Do we know what the cost will be on a yearly basis to the town to maintain the CR because of our requirements as a rule?
The, it should only include Josh's or the conservation administrator's review of the monitoring report that we have done.
My next question is, we've got Audubon Society, Woodlands Trust, Buzzabey Coalition, Wareham Land Trust, all these different organizations, are they going to be able to work together to make this available to everybody in the town of Wareham?
That, the trail system that you see there is already available to the people in the town. Absolutely.
And they can go from one area of ownership to the other?
Absolutely, they do.
Thank you.
It's well-marked, and indeed, we've had numerous workdays. Elise can speak to those where it's been all of the organizations pitching in.
Okay. Thank you.
You had one time when you took vines and you made archways out of them. That was awesome. Sorry.
Yeah. Absolutely.
It was fun.
It was fun, and we tried to leave the invasives where they were and not take them home and spread them other places.
Any questions of Ms. McHale or Ms. Laduke Fleming? No?
No.
I'm good. I will accept a motion-
Madam Chair, it's not a question for them. It's a question procedurally.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to make sure we don't get hung up. A CR is considered an interest in property. Do you need a town meeting action for that? Because you're taking an interest in a property.
We would be bringing this forth to town meeting in the fall, hopefully, because part of the funding that we would be requesting is partly a CPC grant, so again, that would be trying to fit all of these pieces together.
Okay. So basically, if they just did a caveat with town meeting approval, I think that covers everything?
As far as I'm concerned, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did you send us a sample letter? I don't even remember. I don't think you did.
Not, not yet. We, I'm going to turn that back to Elise for a second.
Okay. So why don't we, well, would, do you, when is your grant application deadline, please?
So, there's, this grant application is due July 17th, but I can get that draft letter out to, to, I'm not sure if it should come from Derek or if it should come from you, the select board, if it should come from the Conservation Commission, but I can send that draft language as a template that you're welcome to edit and add to however you see fit tomorrow, if that's helpful.
That would be helpful because I think that we have to sign it, but I'm not 100% convinced, but I want to make sure that we get it back to you in a timely fashion.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't want them to miss out on it. So if we put that language, I think would be good.
Okay. I agree. So, may, yes.
So, if I understand, we're asking the board of selectmen whether we would basically approve a CR for the Conservation Commission for this land, but this whole action requires town meeting, you know, to first do something, so I'm not sure how we proceed, except to say that we're interested, but until that actually happens, how do we go ahead and do this?
I think we have lots of weasel words in the letter, Mr. Bowen. And we do have the recommendation of the Conservation Commission as a positive recommendation to do this.
Unanimously, yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Mr. Bowen?
I move to be the holder of the proposed conservation restriction subject to the approval of town meeting.
Motion so made.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Swartz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Thank you very much. Would one of you send the letter to me, please, tomorrow?
To you directly?
Yes, please.
Okay, absolutely. I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
Have a great, great evening.
Okay, thanks. Okay, now Jackie Jones or someone from SERPED, please, raise your hand.
It should be John Gray as well.
And, okay, and John Gray, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening.
Hi, can you identify yourselves for the record and speak louder, I think? No?
Is this a little bit better of a volume?
Yes, please.
My name is Jackie Jones. I'm a Principal Planner at the Southeast Regional Planning and Economic Development District, or SERPED. And I am joined by my colleague, John Gray, also from SERPED.
Thank you. And you're here this evening to give us a presentation on possible bike path funding options. Is that correct?
Yes, and a brief history of the project, too.
I'm sorry?
I wanted to go over a brief history of the project and a little bit of the regional context, if that would be okay.
Sure. Thank you.
Great. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Great. I just want to say thank you very much for having us this evening. We really appreciate this opportunity to talk about this project. Again, we're from SERPED, which is the regional planning agency that covers southeastern Massachusetts. We assist the 27 communities in our region with their planning efforts. And one of our main focuses is to connect our communities with funding for projects that help improve their transportation system and a wide variety of things related to planning. Tonight specifically, we want to talk to you about the Minnet Avenue and Narrows Road Shared Use Path Project. That's currently on our Transportation Improvement Program. The Transportation Improvement Program is a federal document that allocates federal and state funding to projects. There is about $25 million per year and there are currently a couple of projects in Wareham that we'll talk about tonight, but also this project has funding currently allocated in 2028 for construction. Again, the project follows Narrows Road and Minnet Avenue from Route 6, Sandwich Road, to roughly Depot Street, Onset Avenue, Great Neck intersection. I believe the town also has funding to look at the design of that intersection as well. And then here's a little bit of a timeline for the project. We first started hearing about this project in 2006 when the town of Wareham formed a Bike Path Committee to look at bike path options. We helped back in 2007 make recommendations for potential routes. That evolved into the town retaining services of an engineer to prepare a feasibility study. The result of that feasibility study was a number of recommended routes. This is one of those recommended routes. The town voted to allocate CPA funds towards the bike path design and then put it out for an RFP and hired a designer. The Bike Path Committee surveyed the town several times. Their most recent one was in 2014. And they had over 900 responders, which about 95% showed support for the bike path. The project was approved by Mast dot to be put onto the tip for funding. And then most recently this year, the town was awarded funding of the amount of $177,000 towards design and engineering for the path. So here's sort of our more regional context of the path. We've been working since probably 1995 on the South Coast Bike Way vision. There is a group called the South Coast Bike Way Alliance that's working to promote this vision of a connected path that would go from, the overall goal is Providence to Provincetown, but for our region, it's the Rhode Island border to Cape Cod. So, boy. And then this, so you can see there's Swansea, Westport, Dartmouth, Fairhaven, Matipoiset, Marion. And this red square up in the upper right-hand corner is the section in Wareham that we're talking about today. Recently, the South Coast Bike Way has made many strides, probably over the last decade is when they've really started to make a lot of advancement. This shows the recently opened Shining Tides Trail in Matipoiset. There's also planned sections underway in Marion and several other of the communities. This section of the path is also on the Pan-Mass Challenge Route. And I'm sure if you've driven around town at that time of the year, it's kind of a little bit of a tough challenge to get around the Pan-Mass Challenge, but it also brings a lot of people to town. Here's a more zoomed-in view of the routing in Wareham. Last year, we worked with the town of Wareham and the town of Marion to streamline the routing. Previously, it went up on County Road and Fearing Hill Road, which would have put all the expenses for the path on the town and would have been a lot of right-of-way issues. So we worked with Mast dot and the two towns to develop a routing that utilizes Route 6 and incorporates two projects that were already in development. One, which is a bridge over the Weeby Antic River, and one at the Swift Beach Road intersection. Since that rerouting, Mast dot has now also developed a project to connect those two projects that would run from Hathaway Road to Cremisette Road. So that entire section of the pathway would be under Mast dot's jurisdiction. Their responsibility to build and maintain. Here's a little bit better view of this with a darker background. These red pieces over here, these are the sections that I were talking about that had an updated routing that's all on Route 6. And then the Swift Beach Road over here, which is a very much-needed project, which also, all of these projects are funded through the tip and have, two of them have something allocated to them. The one in the middle is still waiting. And then again, here's the Narrows Minnet Ave section in orange. And then there's a part in the middle that would need to be worked out. And then also the intersection at Onset Avenue, Depot Street, and Great Neck Road would also need to be improved, hopefully, in the near future. This path also connects to the Minnet Forest, which has, double-check my notes. It has quite an extensive network of trails existing. This would improve access to that by improving the, and widening the sidewalks so that bikes would be able to drive there easily with pedestrians. I should have also mentioned that the project's scope is not just to widen the sidewalk. It's to build an ADA-accessible separate use path alongside the road, but would also cover the costs of improving the roadway, too. Here's a couple of shots of the existing cross-section. This is at the Narrows Restaurant, so this is the Narrows Road section. The sidewalk here is in pretty good shape, but it starts to deteriorate as it moves forward. And there's, it's narrow now. There's currently bikes that use it. We don't unfortunately have a great number, but we do have anecdotal evidence that there are an amount of bikes that are to use it. This is the beautiful new Minnet Forest School that has bike racks at it. This would provide bicycle access to this project and also maybe open up potential partnership with Safe Routes to School, which is a program that provides education and funding for students for bicycle and pedestrian education. And this is the Minnet Avenue section, looking towards the center of Wareham. And then a little bit more detailed about the current funding structure. Again, in 2011, the town meeting voted to utilize Community Preservation Act funds towards the design. And then Mass Trails is going to allocate funding to finish that design. The total programmed construction funds right now, because it's in 2028, is $7 million. If it were to go in an earlier year, it would likely be less. The farther out a project is on the tip, the more inflation and cushion that we add to it because costs intend to increase over time. And the federal share of that would be 5.9 million. And then the state matches that. It's an 80-20 split, so the state would match with 1.4 million. And the status of the project is pre-25% design. And then the funding from Mass Trails would complete that. The Mass Trails program has a precedence of funding the same project over multiple phases. So the fact that it received a grant to further the design funds means that they would be likely to help you with additional costs in the future. It would just require a grant application. This section, actually, the entire South Coast Bike Way is in the Mass Trails Priority Network, which means it's a priority for funding and has good chance of receiving Mass Trails funding in the future. In addition to all this regional talk and funding and stuff, there are what we perceive to be many benefits to the town of Wareham. The path could serve as a link between the Wareham Village and the Onset Village. The path would connect Bessie Park to the Minnet Forest and serve as a northern trailhead for several miles of trails. And would also connect to the Bryant Farm Conservation Area, which is part of the Wareham Land Trust that we just heard in the last hearing. The path would allow for safe travel for students if they so choose and would maybe encourage students to travel to school with their parents using the path. The path is identified as a high priority goal in the 2017 Wareham Open Space and Recreation Plan. Again, that survey that the Wareham Pathway Committee did. The path would be fully ADA-accessible and usually enabling use by all ages and abilities. The path is close to the Wareham Village MBTA Station and connects to the Gatcha Route through Wareham Village and Onset Village. Improving the sidewalk there would allow for better access for transit users. Gatcha is a flag route, so anyone along the route can flag down the Gatcha bus. But having a wider sidewalk actually allows for better access for people who use wheelchairs or, and then Gatcha buses also have bike racks in front, too. Path is a critical link for bicycle tourism through the South Coast Bike Way and East Coast Greenway routes. The path is also listed on the state Mass Trails Priority Network. So the network is, the overall goal is to connect Providence to Provincetown. And we're hoping that that brings a lot of bicyclists into town. And we're hoping that that helps the local economy and also that we can provide them with a well-guided and good facilities to get through the town to guide them where you want them to be. And that hopefully you can connect them with your local businesses. There was a 2021 Mast dot Shared Use Path Impact Study that found that paths improve the local economy by generating between $378,000 and $9.2 million per path for businesses near the trails during a four-month study period. There's, I can link to that study. There's a lot of really useful information there. This is just a quote, but there's, it's a really great study. It looked at a lot of different things. And then we're hoping that you will support this project and that you'll see this funding as a sign that there is support for funding the project using outside funds. I really, really appreciate your consideration this evening and would love to hear your thoughts.
If you don't mind, I would also just love to just chime in briefly. I just wanted to sort of add on two additional points here. The first one being that the Minnet Ave Shared Use Path is actually a part of the East Coast Greenway, which Jackie mentioned. So the East Coast Greenway goes from Key West, Florida, all the way to the Canadian border. So this is, part of the reason why this project is getting a substantial amount of federal funds is because it is a national priority, really. This route goes on a national route from, you know, across the entire east coast. And then the second point is the Route 6 projects that Jackie mentioned on that earlier slide, from the Weeby Antic Bridge north, that all has shared use path. So that segment is one of the segments of the South Coast Bike Way. So the shared use path for the Route 6 projects would eventually connect into the downtown, into the Wareham Village area, and then into this. So kind of piecing together what that full vision looks like to sort of give you a sense. So, yeah, I just wanted to just mention as well that those shared use paths are a part of that Route 6 project as well.
Thank you, John.
Can I ask that you send a copy of the PowerPoint to our office, please?
Absolutely. Would you like the links to the studies I referenced, too?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, this is only a presentation, so we're not going to be taking any vote, but do you have any questions that you'd like to ask? Any one of you? No?
This is a project that's been sitting for a while. The major problem we have is that Mast DOT decided to put more responsibilities on us as far as takings and legal actions, which could have been as much as Derek and I mean, I think as much as $500,000. You know, so we have another 177, but I'm not sure how we offset that still. I guess the question is, can we, you know, are we going to come up with a dollar difference? I did the Matipoiset Bike Path opening. It's pretty spectacular. And I've been down there twice, just curiosity. And the volume of people at almost any time of the day is pretty amazing how many people are using the path. And it's all age groups from little kids on, you know, small little three-wheelers, you know, mechanical, of course, to people 70, 80 years old, actually, on bicycles going through it. And it's already having a positive effect on businesses all through that Matipoiset area. Marion is about to go ahead and they have their monies to go ahead with their project, which will come right to the Wareham line. The bridge at the Weeby Antic is designed for, I believe, 10 feet on each side for sidewalk and bike path, which will take care of that piece. I've gone ahead and pushed forward the Swift Beach light in advance of when it normally would have been done. And they've actually gone ahead and increased the Route 6 project as far as the piece on the state level from the New Bedford line all the way down to Wareham, changing the way the road is designed and stuff. So at this point here, it's really a matter of how Mr. Sullivan decides whether he has enough funding to finish the whole piece. You know, we've gone pretty far.
That's an accurate statement. That's not my decision.
Well, it's your decision how to get the funding.
I need to know what dollar amount we're talking about.
I don't think we've got a net figure yet, unless Jackie gets.
No, Jackie?
So that exact figure is figured out in the next stage of the design process. But there is precedent through the Mass Trails Grant Program to fund costs for right-of-way. And because it's on their priority network, this would be a high priority for them. You can't, I can't guarantee that they would definitely give you the grant fund, but they do provide grants up to $500,000 per project per year. And there's nothing, so because you got this grant, it actually helps you in further grant rounds because they like to advance projects, especially ones like this one. It checks off a lot of boxes for them.
Does this cover any takings?
So they, sometimes they require easements. A lot of this is on already somewhat town property for the school and the Minnet Forest. And but there's, when they have to access property, they need easements. So it wouldn't require, it's, I'm not saying that it would require like large land takings. It would maybe like a foot here or there, or they might need an easement so they can access somebody's property. But when they do that, they always grade and replace any grass that might be disturbed. But they, we won't know the exact impact of that until the next stage of design. And we won't know the exact costs of that either. Mast dot did do a calculation that came out around $400,000 to $500,000, but you really need to do it with an engineering study to know those exact costs and impacts.
Thank you.
But we're not, we're not talking about taking like 10 feet of people's property or anything. There's nothing there like that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't think it was, it wasn't, so I'm just trying to figure out how to phrase this. It wasn't huge amounts in the distance of taking or the depth, but it was a huge amount of takings with all the different, it was substantial. And getting back to what Mr. Slavin was saying, and I think what Jackie's gone over, this is not a town project. That's what I was most, if you will, offended by from Mast dot, when they told us this is a town project. This is a linkage project that everything I'm hearing from the Commonwealth to the federal government would like. So I don't see that any, any costs, any more than what we've already put out over, I think, what, $280,000 on this, should come from our taxpayers locally. If this is something that the Commonwealth and others want, then let's apply for the grants and we'll go forward with them. But I don't see that this is the town's obligation. I also worry that, you know, the bike paths can be good, can be, can be a part of it. But I don't want us to be a pass-through either for it and miss out on some of that. So, you know, it's, if we get these grants that we don't have to pay for, let's move on with it. But I don't think there's any obligation from But I don't think there's any obligation from us to spend, if it's a half mil today, I'm going to guess by the time 2028 or further rolls around, there'll be substantially more. I, I can't see us putting the town in that sort of situation, especially when this is something that the Commonwealth wants.
Thank you. Just remind us all, we had a presentation, but we are not voting on it tonight, so. Yes.
Yeah, I think one of the things from the board is the direction from the board, because we do have that grant, which we will lose sooner rather than later if we choose not to take any sort of action. So, you know, I'm, I'm sorry that it isn't a vote from the board, but I need some sort of direction. This grant wasn't a plot, I can tell you, I did not submit this grant. I didn't request it, but it came through and we got it, so.
Okay, my next comment is pretty straightforward. If we go ahead and take the grant and advise our town administrator for the next step, do we have any more expenses? We get to that point where the grant's used up, we have to wait for another grant, or it just stays at that point?
I...
That would be masking Jackie.
Right, but my understanding is that it's a matching grant, that, that the 500, whatever, whatever the amount really is, that we have to come up with some funds. We being the town. Is that correct?
I think...
Are you, I'm sorry, am I?
They're asking about the $177,000 grant. Do we have to match anything to that grant?
So when we applied for the grant, we used the funding that the town had already expended towards the match, and I believe that that's what they accepted as the match, so it wouldn't be any additional expenditures.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to get at. I don't believe we're going to have any expense. We go to the next step, and then that next step, then it becomes what we can get, whether we have to spend it or not. So it makes sense, in my opinion anyways, to go to the next step and see where we're at.
Okay, it is not on here for a vote, I'm, I'm going to take a feeling of the board or, you know.
You can poll the board.
I can poll the board, and I would remind you that Mr. Sullivan has just stated that he did not authorize applying for this grant. Mr. Chadwick, would you like to pursue the grant, yes or no?
I'm going to say yes, but I feel that there's more other pertinent places in town that need bike paths than Minutet Ave.
Thank you, Ms. Wertz.
I am very hesitant on approving anything to do with this because what it is doing is it's narrowing the road where there are multiple homes, I mean, over thousands, over thousand homes, over 1,600 homes, that are in neighborhoods that have one way in and one way out. And this project will take a two-lane road that they dump into and make it one lane. So I don't want to, I don't support anything with this at this point, with this bike path going down six.
It's Minutet.
Thank you.
Right?
It's not the bike.
It's Minutet.
We're dealing with Minutet Ave.
This is only about Minutet.
Yeah, this is only Minutet.
This is Narrows and Minutet Ave.
Narrows to Minutet to Depot.
Nothing to do with Route Six.
And it's on the right-hand side, correct?
They just talk about, they just talk about Wee Wee Antic and six.
Yeah, but they're not talking about that right now. This is only on Minutet.
It's, it's a Narrows Road, Minutet Ave, which joins with the Onset Ave Bike Path that was built down a while ago. It has nothing to do with Route Six.
Not really any, it would be on the right-hand side, right? Very few houses on the right-hand side, I think.
Yeah. But again, we, you need to focus on what we're talking about. And what we're talking about is Narrows Road, Minutet Ave Project Bike Path only.
Madam Chairperson, I think what, what Select Board Member Wertz was speaking to was in the presentation, was talking about the other linkage coming from...
Right, she was, yeah.
...Wee Wee Antic and the rest of it. This, I, I can see the point, because there is, there is obviously a linkage to that at some point, but this, one does not automatically equate to the other, I guess, is the...
I think there's more, and significantly more places, we need to invest our money in this town that are crucial versus bike paths. Not that I don't like bike paths, I like the one in Matapoiset, it's great, my daughter lives there. We're not, Wareham is not Matapoiset.
Thank you. Mr. Slavin, yes or no?
My comment is yes, and I also want to reiterate that we're not looking for the town to put money in. This money for the path is done strictly by the state and the federal government. Wareham originally got a CPA grant for $200,000 years ago for engineering work, which has been done. That was the original need for, you know, we're sitting there and taking other things coming down the line. You know, whether you like it or not, there's a bike path that's coming for the state that they're paying for, basically. And the Route Six project is paid for by the state, not by the town. And it has nothing to do with this piece. This piece is strictly Minutet Ave, Narrows Road, which joins an existing bike path where it joins basically with a Great Neck, Onset Ave, et cetera.
Is that a yes or a no, sir?
And my answer is yes.
Okay, mine is no. I do not support grants that have not been run through, Mr., or presented to Mr. Sullivan, our town administrator, who is in charge of all of the town properties, with the exception of the schools. So I would, my, my, mine would be a no. So I think you heard us. What do you want me to count?
No, I think that leaves me confused. I think I've got a two to two.
You got a two to two, which means that you've got no, nothing.
I would suggest we bring this back when Mr., when Ron is back here. It's all five minutes.
Yeah, it's, okay, well, it was being left up to me beforehand, so I'll see, I'll check on the timeliness of the, of the grant, if it's something we're, we're interested in, and I'll tick off half of you, no matter what the answer is. So that, that's my response, I guess.
That's what we pay you for.
We're moving on.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. I don't think we have anything further for you, Ms...
Thank you.
Jones or Mr. Gray?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, guys.
Okay, we're not doing 9B. I think we should hold the reorganization of the board off until Mr. Bessie is here, so I'm going to go to F, which is the discussion and possible vote to include articles in the July 24th special town meeting warrant. We have been given four articles by the sewer commissioners, and we have also been given one by the town administrator. There are some issues with at least one of the sewer commissioner's articles, but because it was properly submitted to us, we have to put it on the warrant. And Mr. Sullivan has an article that may, in fact, help overcome some of the difficulties that the sewer commissioner warrant articles were. I've given each of you a copy of the warrant as it would come out to be, minus, yeah, there are four articles on it, and then I gave you Mr. Sullivan's additional one. So I need a motion, please, to include Article One, Construction Cost for WPC.
So moved.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Next, Ms. Wertz.
I make a motion that we include Article Two, rescind Article 15, 2022 Spring Town Meeting.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
My, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is included. Next, please, Ms. Wertz.
Motion that we include Article Three, Engineering Plan, Swift Beach Sewer Lines Into Ruggles Pump Station.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to include the Ruggles Swift Beach. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it is included. Article Four, please, Ms. Wertz.
Make a motion that we include Article Four, Transfer of Retained Earnings.
Madam Chairperson, before we vote on that, do you, I think we should just explain the defective nature of that. You have to put it on anyways, but it's...
Yeah, let me just get a second, and then I'll let you go. May I have a second?
Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Sullivan, please.
Yeah, so that article was written before we had the interruption for the June 25th, I believe, town, town meeting, or when it was going to, to be. So that would be in the FY '23, so this current fiscal year. You have retained earnings, which is, which is the enterprise fund's version of free cash, until June 30th. Once July 1 rolls around, you no longer have retained earnings until it's certified by the DOR, which usually happens sometimes, sometime in October, you know. I think the soonest you get it would be the, the end of, end of September, so there's no way to have this, that done in time. If this article were to pass, it would, in effect, appropriate monies, which I think would then throw us out of being able to, to set our tax rate. So my recommendation is, you know, you put it on, it's, there's the article that says, hey, no, no matter what, even if they're going to do something that's going to explode the town, you have to put it on. And that's, in effect, what this article would do sort of financially. So I just want you to know that I'm, I'm hoping that everybody will get together and pass over this, because it would be a, it's a highly defective article.
Thank you for the explanation. Any further discussion? As Mr. Sullivan has pointed out, we must put it on the agenda. It was voted properly by the sewer commissioners at their latest meeting on Thursday evening.
And that's no representation, if you will, and I'm sorry, on the sewer commissioners. You know, this was the article that was agreed, agreed to beforehand, we'd gone over, and I just don't think they, they thought about crossing the, the fiscal years and try and make sure that that's, something that doesn't happen in the future.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to place that item on the warrant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Ms. Wertz, you have another article which was submitted by the town...
Administrator.
Town Administrator. And it, the title of the article is pretty...
It's not the 2020.
Yeah, so just...
It's the same as here.
Instead of amend, and I'm sorry that didn't get checked, it should, instead of rescind, it should say amend. Does that make sense?
I make a motion that we include Article Five, amend Article 15, 2022 for the Spring Town Meeting.
Is there a second to that motion? Any further discussion on the motion?
Madam Chairperson, so just to let you know, this is, this is simply a placeholder. I know that the sewer commissioners had a robust conver, conversation, and there was some concerns, this article and the explanation lists that nothing could happen without the approval of the sewer commissioners. If they, in fact, do not vote to support this article, I would then recommend we pass over it at town meeting. This is not something, it's because of the last sort of minute of nature of the, the vote that occurred, I just want to make sure we have this opportunity. And again, if they don't want to do it, it's, it's perfectly fine, so. I will tell you, it is a little strange to see three different versions of me on the screen when I'm looking through the computer, so.
Thank you. So any further discussion on the motion to include that article? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Ms. Chadwick? Yes. And myself, yes, it is included. Now, Ms. Wertz, I'm going to accept a motion to close that warrant.
I make a motion that we close the July 24th special town meeting warrant.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the warrant. Any further discussion on the motion to close the warrant? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
Myself, yes. This warrant will be served by our constable tomorrow or the next day to the people that need to be served, which include the moderator, the chair of the finance committee. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Okay, next on the agenda. I've lost my second page, I have no idea where it is. Oh, yeah, I have 48-hour business, unfortunately. I received a request from Mr. Buckland on Thursday at 6:15, and it was a request that we authorize the chair to sign a letter in support of a grant by B.B.A.C., et cetera, to remove the Parker Mill Dam, which is a Tremont Nail Factory. I gave you a sample of the letter. So it is a $450,000 grant, would pay for 100% of the design of the dam removal, which we had previously voted as a board to support the full removal, not a halfway or, you know, partial removal or anything. So I'd like a motion, please, to authorize the chair to sign the letter.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. This will appear on the July 11th agenda for a confirmatory vote, but the letter will go out tomorrow because the deadline is June 30th. Okay, town administrators report.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. We put out the behalf of the, to the Hammond School out for bid, and the Christopher Donovan School won the bid, we will be awarding it to them. And moving forward, I think it's, it's good to keep them in the community, they, they help with high, with special needs children, and they're, I think they're a great asset to this community. So I just wanted to let you know what was going on in there. Mr. Buckland and myself have been speaking to some of the, some of the dam safety folks on the removal. We've also been meeting with FERC, Ken especially, and Mr. Menard, so a lot of work going into that and trying to figure out the future of the Tremont Dam, which is the one up off of Maine. And then I could respectfully ask at the next scheduled town, excuse me, selectmen's meeting, that we include year-end transfers on that agenda, so we can take care of those.
It's been done, sir. It's already on the agenda.
All right, you're just too good, so I appreciate it.
What kind of safety people did you say?
What's up?
What kind of safety people did you say?
FERC. F-E, F-E-R-C.
The dam safety people?
Damn. D-A-M.
All right, all right, thank you. Just need that clarification. Go ahead.
Fourth of July is coming up, I hope everybody has a happy and safe holiday as well. I know we won't meet before then, so wishing everybody, it's a great time, and hopefully we'll move away from this rainy weather and some of the sunshine that makes, makes living in New England how great it is. So, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Liaison Initiative Reports, Mr. Chadwick?
None.
Ms. Wertz?
I just had a very interesting meeting with the planning, the planning board, very interesting. The planning board had a very interesting meeting last night. They had a presentation by Sherri Kirk that I think was some of the best information I've seen about battery sites, solar battery sites, and, and there was also a really open communication question about how much we really do with solar battery in terms of hurting our aquifer otherwise. I think there's been a lot of knowledge passed on just yesterday on both of those issues that, more than I've seen at other points.
Thank you. Anything else? No, excellent. Mr. Slavin?
Oh, let's see. Plymouth County, actually Plymouth, the town, certain parts there, they're going to look to put a fairly good-sized convention center in Plymouth. It will basically be for the south coast area. It will bring business and different events to the south coast area, and it will have a linkage over to Wareham, so I'll keep after that as well. I spoke to Randy Parker... I spoke to Randy Parker, one of the selectmen in Marion. I wanted to get an update of where they were as far as, uh, the Route 6 projects because basically Matapoyset and Fairhaven have already approved what's happening with the state on the Route 6, and Marion has also, basically, has gone ahead. Uh, the bridge was done actually just before COVID with them, and, uh, they had no issues with it at all. And since we have some issues from one of our select persons, I spoke to Mr. Sullivan about raising the bridge up because, uh, harbor master was looking to see if the bridge could be raised for clearance, and I asked Randy what the status was with them, and they said, well, the bridge was going to be raised about eight inches, which is really insignificant, and that they had voted okay, they have no issue with it. But I've actually asked them to write a letter supporting Mr. Sullivan's letter, asking if the bridge could be raised more to possibly, uh, make it easier for boats to get under there during certain times. Honestly, I've looked at what the Mass DOT has responded, and the cost, if they raise the bridge, you would have to replace the riprap program, structure under the bridge. Uh, someone actually said they wanted to see the bridge go up 15 or 20 feet. Physically impossible because it would change the road. You know, if you thought you had an issue with the road and, and visibility and everything else. If you remember what happens in Florida when you get to, uh, Fort Lauderdale, there's a hill. It's the only hill in Florida on Route 95, et cetera. Anytime you go there and you're going up that hill, the traffic comes to a halt because people hit the hill and they don't know what to do. So it would affect the visibility and everything else, raising that bridge up with the traffic at 50 miles an hour coming up and over. So we'll see what happens, but we're going to at least ask.
So, I'm sorry, so did you just ask whether we would write a letter supporting that?
No, Mr. Sullivan was going to write a letter.
Oh, okay.
Because it's been requested by the harbor master originally, when this was done probably three years ago. Uh, the harbor master asked if the bridge construction could be raised, so I reached out and to our next neighbor town, which is the other half of the bridge, and asked what their status was, and they have no issues, everything was approved on their end, but they would be happy to support us, asking for the bridge to be raised.
Okay, great, thank you.
It'll be interesting to see how high they raise it because those cars going from Marion into, um, Wareham right now, I mean, that's my neighborhood, but I go out the end of the street and watch this. They're going down that road 60, 65 miles or more.
The speed limit's 50, but what are they doing?
Well, it's not even raised, and so it'll be like-
As of right now-
-roller coaster ride.
As of right now, the specification for the bridge is, I think, either eight or 12 inches from where it is now.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mr.?
No, I think that's enough for me.
Madam Chairperson, just to, yeah, I think the shame, and I appreciate, uh, Select Person Slavin, uh, select board member, uh, bringing that forward because, uh, this was Mr. Menard when they were in their original phase, um, met, went out there and met and talked to him about it, talking about how we're hearing all the sea level rise, everything has to happen, and they had no real consideration on how to take care of that. I mean, you've got, you have a, um, what do you call it, a, a boatyard up in there. We have people with docks, and it's just, it's just a shame it wasn't listened to at that point because when they talk about, well, the engineering cost now is going to be so much more, um, have they, you know, I guess I just don't understand where we're held to a standard on engineering on everything we're doing, which is holding us up on our, ours, why, why that wasn't the same for Mast Dot on it, but.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Slavin?
No, it's just the difference between Mast DOT and the, and the local areas, you know, it's like there's a, there's definitely a barrier between the two at times.
Okay.
Yeah, that's usual.
I just have a couple of comments, and one of them is that we are now meeting on the 2nd and the 4th Tuesdays of the month. The, uh, meeting of the 2nd is always a Zoom, and the meeting on the 4th is always a hybrid. And that's our summer schedule, just so that the public knows. So the 2nd Tuesday is always a Zoom, and the 4th Tuesday is always a hybrid meeting.
July 11th and 23rd.
And our next meeting is July 11th, and I would also ask all of you to stay safe over the holidays, and if that's it, I'll accept the-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made to adjourn. It's not debatable. I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Ms. Wertz?
Yes.
Myself, oh, thank you. Four yeses. The, the person who's transcribing the meetings is asking why you were voting against adjourning. That's how silly it is. We are adjourned. Good night, Wareham.